To order the Board of County Commissioners for December 6, 2023. We typically start these meetings with a prayer, reading, or a thought. Our prayer today will be given by Laurel Price and then the Pledge of Allegiance will be given by Adam Beck.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to be here today as a community to discuss the budget and the priorities of our community and the resources that we provide for the residents of Utah County. We're thankful for the opportunity to serve the residents of Utah County and thankful for the opportunity to be involved in government. We pray, Father, that Thy Spirit will be with us, will have an enjoyable meeting, and pray for our first responders that serve us locally and nationally to watch over and protect them. And we're so grateful, again, for all that we've been given in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is a recognition for Employee of the Month, and Commissioner Gordon is going to present that for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. I'm not sure if this person knows why they're here today, but without further ado, Deputy Brett, Lawrenson is our Employee of the Month. Did you know that, by the way?
I started to guess.
Okay. After I said it? Or just...I mean, I know you're a detective, you're in law enforcement. Usually the sheriff's deputies that understand that they've been hoaxed into coming to this meeting. So I'm gonna read some nice things about you, Brett, if that's okay. He was nominated, obviously, by his peers. He is the lead firearms instructor for the sheriff's office. And recently, two of our deputies responded to a call near Fairfield, which resulted in an officer-involved critical incident. "In my opinion," says the person writing this nomination, "both deputies were exceptional in the performance of their duties and how they handled it overall. I later spoke with both deputies to see how they were doing, and they both told me they were good. They expressed that the recent firearms training they had attended was almost exactly the same as their incident, and it had prepared them very well. They both spoke very highly of the training and how they fell back on it and just did what they had been trained to do. I've also had feedback from supervisors who expressed how thankful they were for their training provided. This training happened because of Deputy Lawrenson's dedication and determination to provide the best, realistic training he possibly could. To hear deputies say they were able to perform so well because they had been trained for that very situation just confirmed what I already knew. Deputy Lawrenson's commitment has and will save the lives of our deputies and citizens." So without further ado, congratulations.
You wanna say anything first?
No, that's okay.
Oh, you're welcome to stay.
It's gonna be a fun one. We will suspend the rules. Commissioner Sakovich was unable to make it, so I will be able to second motions. With that, we will entertain a motion to head into the public hearing to discuss the 2024 budget of the General Fund and other budgetary funds of Utah County.
So moved.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now in a public hearing. We will start the public hearing with a presentation from the auditor's office.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jeremy Walker, Director of Financial Services, was here about a month ago to introduce the tentative budget, and we've been working endlessly, it seems, to update and try to improve the outlook of the budget for 2024, and there's been some successes there. So this presentation is just to give an overview of where we're at since last month. So just some highlights generally of this proposed budget. There's a 5% increase to overall expenditure. This is the General Fund specifically. 5% increase in expenditures as compared to where we're at currently in the 2023 budget. We're showing, we're projecting sales tax to grow at a mere 2%, which is much lower than recent years, and that'll be 2% over our projections for 2023. And just historically, pandemic aside, 3% to 5% is usually where our year-to-year growth is, so it's definitely down, still positive but down. Property tax, similarly, we've had a reduction in new build permits pulled in 2023, so that will have a knock-on effect to 2024. We'll obviously still have growth in new builds, but it'll be at a slower pace, the 4% to 5% of historical or over the last 15 years or so. So what it equates to is an additional 3.5 million use of fund balance in the General Fund from where we're at right now to up to 10.6 million. A positive sign is that our compensation, total compensation, so wages and benefits, for this budget proposal is only 6%, which is really a good number compared to recent years.
So can you go back real quick? Just looking at that, if our property tax growth is down 3%, and sales tax, are we not planning on growing as a county?
So it's not negative growth, it's down to 2%, down to 3%.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah.
Right, so instead of a 5% increase, it's a 3% increase?
Correct.
Now, with that said, if we're planning for the county population to grow by 3%, which all projections show it will, but sales tax growth is only 2%, then even though mathematically it's not a negative, it pretty much is, if you factor in growth.
Yes, it's not a rosy financial picture.
That's a little worse than I thought it was gonna be, so thanks for the good news.
You're welcome. Of course, this is a projection, so take it with a grain of salt. So this graph just shows, and this has been updated from, I showed this graph at the tentative budget, I updated it for where we are with this proposed budget to show just over $10 million use of fund balance. So I show where we were the last few years, and as county governments go, we're on a bit of a roller coaster. So before the property tax increase in 2019, the county had budgeted into a deficit for successive years, which is a bad thing. And then for a variety of things, the tax increase and the pandemic hitting at the same time, we had several surpluses budgeted. And in 2023, the small blue bar was where we started the year, and then the pale yellow bar is after our amendments, so we're into a deficit budget currently. So the 2024 goes a little bit further, and then I just did a projection based off of an 8% cost growth and our 3% revenue growth across the whole fund to show that, I believe amber is the color that you would call that, so it's not red, it's urgently bad, and I'll go into a little bit of why, but that's our projection, that's our trend right now. So the next slide shows the Health Department, and we had a, so these are original budget deficits, and these are operating deficits from the Health Department, which, as we know, they're not breaking even, and it'd be hard to do that in health services, but this is how their operating deficit has changed over years. And where they're at for this budget, and again, I've got an update to that, they reduced their operating deficit dramatically over the last month, and we'll go into some of that. So what's the progress over the last month? The tentative budget essentially was the departments submitting their new requests and any changes that they would like to see from '23 to '24. The budget team engaged with them, digested that, rolled forward a lot of things that we're committed to currently, and then contemplated which things we, because some unfunded mandates and other things, we have to fund, current contracts and so forth. So we got to the tentative budget based on that, knowing there was a lot of decisions yet to be made, and those still are not made, but there've been, the following actions have taken place. So there've been 30 positions across the county that were vacant, that were eliminated to reduce the budgeted expenditures. The requests, as discussions from many parties, mostly internal, there've been reductions or eliminations of requests for new spends or existing spend. We found some duplications, and those have been identified and eliminated. There've been contingencies, which it's really nice to have a little contingency in your budget for unknowns. Some of those have been reduced and/or eliminated, so we're definitely tightening our belt on operations. And then there have been increased fee revenues where that was possible, and we'll continue in 2024 to analyze and make recommendations where appropriate for other fees throughout the county. And then our sales tax projection has been updated based on more information that's come in in the last month or so. So here's just a quick highlight of those numbers, so about a million dollar decrease in projected sales tax, so still anticipating 2% growth, but what it's gonna be growing from, we now think is gonna be lower. So we went from a total, in the tentative budget, of 6% total expenditure growth to 5, so it's only 1%, but on $120 million, that's a substantial amount of dollars. Again, the compensation, our tentative budget anticipated 8.6 total compensation growth, and it's now down to under 6%, so a lot of that's by eliminating those positions. And then the use of fund balance was decreased by 3.6 million in the General Fund, so that is, I've seen, as many of you have seen, what it's taken to do that, and relative to our overall budget, that's a lot, but that represents real dollars that were needed and anticipated that are no longer gonna be available according to this budget. And then same in the Health Department, they've really tightened their belts and dropped their operating deficit by 4.1 million. So those are General Fund highlights. So to kind of repeat what we talked about a month ago, just to the general economic environment that we're in, sometimes it's easy to generally feel negative about inflation and how much it costs. I put down what those real dollars from a property tax revenue basis, as we have that inflation, because property tax does not adjust for inflation. These are the purchasing dollars that are lost due to inflation based on these, and these are national inflation numbers, but it's pretty substantial over four years that our purchasing power has dropped by almost $10 million because of inflation.
So ultimately, our deficit that we're looking at here is about a half a million dollars shy of inflation, so if we had inflationary adjustments, we'd almost be there. That makes me feel a little bit better about it.
And then this is historical sales tax growth as a percentage over the prior year. So again, just to show the individual years, and 2021 and '22 were crazy, no one saw those numbers coming, and it seemed great at the time, but then realizing, oh, well, we're paying for it on the other side with what we're having to pay our people and supplies and things that we purchase. So the revenue has held, obviously, until 2023, where I guess everyone just stopped buying stuff, so.
Well, with that said, if it was historically average, even if we went with the low historical average of 5% instead of 2%, our budget would have balanced.
So these are external factors on our budget that are impactful. So the big question is, what does it mean for the county and specifically for the General Fund? So here's, I'll geek out a little on accounting terms, so bear with me or tune me out, but the fund balance in the General Fund, and fund balance is often called rainy day fund, we ended 2022 with 55.5 million total, and that breaks down to our legal minimum that we have to have by state laws, 6.2. Our policy is 14.6, so the 6.2 is part of the 14.6, sorry, no, it's not part of the 14.6, those are compounding. So what's available to do whatever we want with is 34.7. So if we're budgeting $10 million deficit, that reduces for, sorry, we have budgeted 7 million for this year in additional 10, so you can see, we only have a couple years of, if you will, rainy day fund available to us, and that compounds each year. We're going deeper into the hole each year on that pace. So what is the rainy day fund? Well, it does two main things. It acts as a buffer for economic downturns, which is where we're at, and this is a scenario where it's great that we have some so that we don't immediately have to do dramatic things to revenue or costs. The other thing that it does is, and this is where I think the legislation behind the minimum, is it provides working capital, so we only collect property tax once a year at the end of the year, but we start spending that year's budget in January, so we have to have some working capital to be able to fund on a cash flow basis, even though we know we'll get the money but not till the end of the year.
That prevents us from having to bond against future revenue, right?
And some local, smaller local governments do have an annual tax anticipation note or a temporary loan to float the cash during the summer and the fall until they get theirs. Fortunately, we don't have to do that, but that is a real thing, and it's an acceptable practice, but that's a dual purpose for that fund balance. So it being called the rainy day fund, and this is really the takeaway from this, is that 2024 is gonna be a rainy year, we're gonna have to use that money, and right now it's looking on our budget at about $10 million. Questions? So have our team here to respond to questions or anything you want to do with what's been proposed from here on out.
You emailed out and uploaded onto the system a budget schedule, and one of the things that I noticed in the budget schedule that I didn't see you review there was the ANC fund, the Assessing and Collecting Fund.
Yes.
And I noticed that that fund also had a significant budgeted use of fund balance.
Yeah, 3.6 million is what's budgeted for 2024. Their fund balance, or their rainy day fund, is just under 6 million, so if they use what's in this proposed budget, that would take that down by half.
Okay, so then their 25 would not be amber.
Correct.
It would be red. They would be upside down, like no fund balance even. So not only is it a structurally imbalanced budget, but we don't even have a rainy day fund to cover that in 2025.
There is part of that negative on the ANC would also come out of the restricted budget that the Recorder's Office have, so it wouldn't necessarily, all of that wouldn't hit the $6 million that we have in the fund balance for ANC, because there's an additional restricted fund balance.
No, I think the number that he just quoted does not include the Recorder's Office. The Recorder's Office has a $15 million deficit, I mean, fund balance, and the number he just quoted is 3.6, but we have in the budget here 4.2, so that's a differential of $600,000, which would be the Recorder's Office, I'm assuming.
Yeah, the 3.6 is aside from the Recorder's Office.
Right, so what he just quoted me is, does not include Recorder's deficit, so the ANC fund minus the Recorder's Office runs out of fund balance in 2025 at this rate, at this current tax rate and spend rate. Recorder's Office is fine, they got money. Andrea, you're good, you can, it's, I think it's Kim and Burt Garfield that need to tense up a little bit, okay? All right, thank you for clarifying that, because I had noticed that in what you sent over.
So we are in public hearing.
Yes.
So any ground rules for that, like you need to lay out?
Nope. So for the public hearing, for the budget, if any public would like to speak, public comments are limited to three minutes, and anyone from the public or the county is welcome to speak at this time about the budget. This is specifically for the budget.
Thank you, Mark Allen, Protect and Preserve American Fort Canyon, and launched recently a citizen portal on Glenn Beck, and you've done a stellar job. You've got an IT department here that could be running a TV show. You've been doing a great job as a director. This is the way it's supposed to be done. I've been working on the state taxonomy, and we've got 30-plus entities that need to follow what you've just done here. Special Service District, I have no idea what you're talking about. I wish that there would be a way to preface what that is, how it affects people, because you're throwing out $5 million, million dollars, whatever, here and there, and we just don't know.
That's great advice, that we could add a little.
You did a great job. I attended the budget session the other night, great job. It's nice to finally see we've got the right people on the bus, and I've got established trust, I think, with every elected official in the county, and I'm very grateful for the outreach that you guys are working towards, but I have been observing for about 10 years. And I would hope, I've got a little flyer here, I'd like to give to each of you Commissioners, if I may just approach you. So the presentation was great. Quote, "That which is measured improves, that which is measured and reported improves exponentially", right? I have only seen two entities in the county that do not track as they should. That's a big ticket item. In 30 years, I've found myself going through divorce and some other legal things, and I've made observations of our legal system, and public defenders and prosecutors are the only attorneys I've ever met in my life that don't bill by the 15-minute increment, and they don't even keep track. So I would like to see any budgetary increases for any departments tied to transparency and just replicate what you've just done here. Open, recorded, put it up online where citizens can know what's going on. I'd like to see the county invest in tracking attorney time, require those, both on the public defender as well as on the prosecutorial side. I was on a Zoom not long ago, held hostage by the judge for four and a half hours, waiting to be called. There were 50 people in the Zoom. Do the math, $400 an hour for some of the attorneys, $80 an hour for some of the public defenders, it was a lot of wasted money, and that was one court case, one judge. So I think we've probably got tens of, if not hundreds of millions of dollars we're wasting as a state, waiting, and I would suggest to sign a case to a specific prosecutor, don't pass the buck, and when you make a mistake, take accountability for it. On the last page, please keep that last page private for your own internal uses. This little pie chart lists every entity that you've got in the county that is in the state's taxonomy. I don't know if those are valid or not, but if you just take a look and maybe do a little audit and see if those entities are actually functioning entities, that would be great. And with that, my three minutes are done, but thank you for what you're doing. If we could replicate this across the US, the problems in the US have been done in the dark, that's where we're at, so thanks for shedding light on it and being exemplary. In the portal, the last thing I'll say is Utah County is in first place in the nation for most content online, so let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
And thank you for your comment. Do we have any other comments on the budget? Any online? Move to close the public meeting.
You bet. Motion to go out of public hearing.
All right, I will second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now out of the public hearing for the 2024 budget. We will now build the consent agenda and regular agenda. All things not continued or held or tabled will move to the consent agenda. Items 1 through 10.
Item 4.
Hold item 4.
And I don't know that we need to hold item 5, but the date's there. I'm good with all that, so December 20th.
Yep.
Who on item 6?
Sarah Hubs.
Oh, okay.
If you're good with that, we can leave it on consent with the name Sarah Hubs. Sarah Hubs, S-A-R-A-H-U-B-B-S. And item number 10, we did get a last-minute comment in the system approving, so we're good there.
And I'm good with that.
Okay, so so far it's just item 4 that's held, right?
Correct.
11 through, let's go 21.
None for me.
I had none either. Okay, looks like we will need closed sessions 22 and 25, correct, Paul? But we can strike 23 and 24? All right, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Alice?
Okay, I have us holding regular agenda items number 4. 6 is approved with the name of Sarah Hubs, excuse me. And then as far as closed meetings, we're gonna hold as stated 22, striking 23, striking 24, and holding 25.
That's what I've got as well? All right. Everything else on consent was passed. We will jump in to item number 4, which is the budget.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Rudy Livingston, I'm the Budget Manager for the county, and it's a pleasure to be here with you today. In response to the question that was brought up in the public hearing about the information and what these things are, I would invite anybody that would like to know more about what our county budget is to go to utahcounty.gov and look in the auditor's office, and there's a budget posted on there. In 2023, we had the first-ever budget book for Utah County that we put together, and it's on there, and there's all kinds of great information regarding those kind of things in that budget book that will tell you about what the special districts are, amounts in the budget, and we recommend anybody in the public to go in there and look at it. And if you have comments about that, send them to me, and I'd be happy if there's additional comments. And I, and, and if you have comments about that, send them to me, and I'd be happy if there's additional content that we want to put in there, give it to me. So I just wanted to just make that available, and we intend to have that available for the public this year as well, once we have the budget finalized, okay? I don't have a specific presentation for you. Jeremy pretty much got us along that path. So I'll be happy to answer any questions or maybe, you know, help us through any discussions that we want to have, so.
So I think what I would like to do, you guys gave us several items. One was the budget schedule. I've reviewed that. A list of the staffing plan, and then a consolidated list of every budget request item that did not have consensus with all three commissioners. So if you don't mind, I, I wouldn't mind go, kind of going through and looking at this.
I'd like to know how it shook out.
I know that the budgeted use of fund balance is down three point five million, which is great, but I would love to see it come down even a little bit more if possible. So I've got a couple of things. Maybe we can look through this consolidated additional request schedule and look at the things that don't have consensus. And then I also had a list of existing staffing positions that I want to make sure, that, that we're in the tentative budget, that I would like to make sure that we can pull out of, of the budget, or at least put in restricted. And then if we need them, we could have money set aside for that.
And we talked before the meeting about restricted. Can you give us, for the public, a high level of, that was something that's very different from my experience at the municipal level?
Basically, we used restricted, we restricted appropriations for, for three types of things. The first one is where we maybe want to put some money aside for a potential need that we might have. So for instance, we might have a contingency fund in there. We think maybe we want to put a million dollars in there for us to be able to act on different things that might happen throughout the year. So it's possibly just put a blank amount of money in there for a contingency, if you will. The other things we use it for is, in our case, we, each year, our HR department comes to us and says, "We believe that we're going to do a market study for our salaries and benefits for the year." And based upon that market study, we anticipate that it's going to be a certain number of, of increase to the, to the salaries and benefits. And so rather than trying, assign that to an individual department, because we really won't know until those market studies are done, we put an amount that they're assuming in there. So it's kind of a holding place for those potential increases that we might have a little bit later on. So that, that's one of, that's our biggest item actually in the restricted account right now. The third one is where we may have some requests from certain departments that they may want a certain item, and the commission may say, well, you know what? I don't necessarily want to approve that right now, because either we don't know if we're going to have the money for it, number one, or we, we want to have some kind of a performance done before we get to that point. And so we'll set it aside in a restricted account, that if, at a future point, the, the department can come to the commission and say, "Commissioners, we believe that we would like to use that money that's in that restricted account." And so they come and ask, and then the commission can determine whether they want to grant that and put it into the operating budget for the department. Those are the three basic reasons that we have those restricted. And the final one is one that we throw, we put in there every year. You know, we, all of our purchase orders expire at, at December thirty-first. And so there are times where we'll make a purchase, and because of transportation issues or, you know, supply line issues, whatever, that those purchases that we've made in the year are not received by December thirty-first. If they're not received by December thirty-first, they cannot be recorded in the current year. And so the departments want to fulfill those contracts and have those things. So what, what we do is we put money aside in a restricted account, so that on a one-by-one basis, we can look at those purchases that did not arrive by December thirty-first, and we can then use that money that we've set aside for that to cover those. And that money comes from use of fund balance, because we didn't use the money in the prior year, so it goes into fund balance, and then we'll just pull it back out for that.
It's really new for me, because like, you know, at the city level, we can just transfer out of maybe a utility fund and
Yeah.
balance some things, and we don't have an internet business or, you know, and so anyway, that's, that's very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very, very good.
I think our county administrator had a little bit, he wanted to say. Ezra, do you want to?
I appreciate that. Thank you. I just had a couple people text that are watching online. Just wanted to explain this process a little bit as well. Great numbers from the Auditor's Office and, and a great description of our financial position of where we're at. The budget, really, just for the benefit of the public, for everyone who's watching, is a framework of what we're going to be able to accomplish next year. It's more than just the dollars and cents, while that's going to be a large part of our discussion today, actually setting those dollars and cents. But really, if you think about it, it's where are the priorities of each of the different departments and each of the other elected officials that have been given mandates from the public to, to accomplish. So what you'll see here is a compilation of all of the different requests from different department heads, different elected officials that, that have those mandates, provide those services, and the resources that they're going to need for those. So as we're facing, you know, the, the many deficits that we're looking at, spending into fund balance, that's where it comes to your guys' table, where the commissioners have the opportunity to now go in and say, "Okay, here are the requests from the departments and the other elected officials. This is an opportunity for us to review those and see how we can help deal with our financial reality and also the desire for the public to receive the services that they've either voted for or had been appointed through, through you guys as well." So really, the county, we, we focus on those essential services. You'll see in this budget document, a lot of the funds are primarily towards public safety, public health, and, you know, prosecuting and defending those efforts as well. Lastly, the tax rates, again, they, they don't adjust for inflation, so we've seen a pretty significant issue with the inflation that we've seen when we have these high inflation years. It's, it's good for some things, but also quite bad for most things. And so our budget is, is no different than that. But because of the Open Public Meetings Act process, the commissioners don't really have an opportunity to discuss the budget ahead of this meeting. So a lot of this meeting is going to seem like a, a technical working session. There's going to be times where things are seen for the first time, essentially. And that's because all the public discussion on the budget, it, it needs to happen before the public. And so this is really an opportunity. We've sent these documents out to each of the separate commissioners, and they've each gotten an opportunity to, to give input to the Auditor's Office about how they feel about the requests that they need, the demands that they have. And so now the commissioners have each individually gotten an opportunity to vet through those, look at what they support, what they might not support. And here, it's finally been compiled and presented to the commission. And the auditor's budget that you'll see online is, when there was agreement between two commissioners, kind of anticipating that that's how the vote could go at this meeting, if two commissioners are supportive of it. Those changes were included in that tentative budget. And so that's what you're seeing there, but there are more requests. There are varying requests where two commissioners have agreed on one thing, two different commissioners have agreed on another thing. And so this is really an opportunity for you all to go through those requests, to see where those differences are and make adjustments accordingly. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Rudy.
And Ezra makes a very good point, that we have put on the, the agenda system, the auditor's proposed budget. This is not a budget that has been proposed by the commissioners yet, because the commissioners have not had this deliberation where you can go through and answer these questions. So anything that's on there, we've tried to understand what we believe to be the will of at least two of the commissioners, and so we've included those items in, in there. So I just want to make that quick point.
I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but have you done the math of, like, where, how far apart are the three of us? I think I've got my number, but I, do you have sort of that high level? Or anyone from the?
I mean, it, it's, it's interesting, because there are a couple of items that are really big ticket. There's one for the public defender's office that the public defender requested an increase of three point seven million dollars, and that showed up on one of the commissioners' proposals. So that right in and of itself is a huge amount. Whereas the other two commissioners were recommending four hundred and something thousand for an increase to match what we gave them last year. Do you, we have a total of that?
Yeah, sure. That'd be great, if you don't mind, if you've got them.
They have, they have the schedule. I don't.
Sorry to throw you on the spot, but I appreciate you being willing.
No, that's fine. So it, this is fairly crude, but I just totaled up. In this document, we have each a column for each of the commissioners and the amounts that they tentatively had approved. So Commissioner Gordon was seventeen point eight million of, of all the new requests, Commissioner Gardner sixteen point three, and Commissioner Sakovich twenty point one. And eighteen, eighteen of that ended up in the proposed. So it's somewhere in between all three of you.
And that's countywide. That's all departments.
Is this like golf? If I have the lowest number, do I win?
Yeah, as far as the.
Because this will be the only time I ever beat you in golf.
You don't know that.
If you break an arm.
Thank you. That's the nicest thing anybody's said to me today. Okay, that, that is helpful. Yeah. What was I gonna, what was the other thing I was gonna ask just now?
We've got a lot of info in our brains right now, so.
Well, and, and, and part of me is wrestling with the idea that Commissioner Sakovich is not here and, and has asked that maybe we delay the approval of the budget. And so part of me is also wondering how much deliberation we want to do today, assuming.
So I was thinking the same thing, and as I looked at it, it looks like, looks like Commissioner Sakovich approved almost everything. And so if there isn't three commissioners that approved it, it's typically either you or me who didn't. I think from what I'm seeing and from his messages to us over the last few days, the only difference is are he did not approve any salary study increases for our employees. But you and I both approved those. But as far as, if we go through line item by line item, it looks like ninety-plus percent, if there's a commissioner that said, no, it was you or me, like I said, with the exception of salary study increases for the employees. He said no to all of those, but both you and I said yes. The public defenders, he approved the three point seven million, whereas you and I did not. And then there were a couple of just smaller miscellaneous items that were like, just maybe two or three of those. So if we, what I feel comfortable discussing is any of the areas where you and I disagree, this is very helpful for me to be able to see that. So maybe we just focus on those items.
Yeah.
And then, and I'm totally fine, as Commissioner Sakovich asked, that we delay the vote till next week, and then that'll give us a little bit of time to ask him on the ones that we disagreed with him on.
So it appears that the first one of those is number, line number nine, which was, is adding one legal assistant. And both of the Commissioner Gordon and Commissioner Sakovich did vote for this. I believe that Commissioner Gardner, when we had our discussion, that was one that you had anticipated waiting until later in the year, or perhaps the beginning of next year, to add that one.
Yeah, so originally, when the request came in, I spoke with the Attorney's Office, with Jeff and, and with his office. And when the requests originally came in, a new court was on schedule to be opened, and so they said they needed that legal assistant. But as it looks now, the soonest that court will open will be October of next year. And so when I spoke with them, they felt comfortable punting that until twenty twenty-five, because they'll only have basically two months that they'll need to work with a new court opening, assuming it opens on time. So I did not fund that because of the delay in the opening of that court.
And that is one of my general fund items that is in restricted, or that I had the idea of restricted, just because knowing that it was going to come on later in the year, that it would start up costs or, or whatever else. I just didn't want to get caught in twenty twenty-four with having to add that if we do. But, but I see your wisdom. And if, if with them being your portfolio, that's good to have that conversation, that if you've, you've had a conversation that I have not had, you know, I'm.
I would say at the very least, we would prorate it.
For sure.
Right? So it was ninety-eight thousand, so, I mean, to say, if, if my, I mean, my suggestion would be, if we do two twelfths, right, of that.
Because you'd have, or a quarter of the year, if it.
Right, one-sixth. So it'd be like sixteen thousand. If we did it, we could put sixteen thousand in restricted, or we could just by the, by then, if by October, they might have unused eleven hundred funds that they could use if it's only sixteen thousand. So if we didn't fund it, we could, if they needed it in October, we could allow them to transfer out of unused eleven hundred funds, which they would have by then.
Okay. Is there, is there any anticipated startup costs that perhaps my only brain might say, all right, if you've got ninety-eight thousand eight hundred there, maybe we take that number down to eighty thousand, and it leaves you eighteen thousand eight hundred in order to, you know, maybe get, if there's computers and things like that, but I don't.
Yeah, I mean, you could, but at the same time, so you could do eighteen thousand or you, in restricted, or you could say, we'll let them transfer eleven hundred funds for that.
Oh, that.
You see what I mean? Because it's all personnel cost.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, absolutely. So.
Backing up really quickly, Rudy, on the requests above that, that say adding three criminal attorneys.
Yes.
Did, did all three of those end up getting requested, or did some of those end up getting pulled back?
They were, the original request was about four hundred thousand dollars, so this has been scaled back.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I thought I remembered that they had requested three, but we had approved one.
Yes.
Right? So this, so these numbers reflect one, not three.
That is correct.
Okay. They reflect one, not three. It just says adding three in the notes. That's why it threw me off.
So how would we like, would you like us to take notes and come and, and factor these things into a revised revision number? Or do we want to look at it right now and say, what's our impact if maybe we might get to the point where we actually pass something?
No, Commissioner Sakovich has asked that we wait till next week. So if we can go through it and then give us a revised schedule next week with him, then we, I, I would feel more comfortable with that.
So we'll take these, and then we'll run them through, and then we'll get back to you within, you know, maybe. Yeah, so if you'll tell us exactly what you want us to do with this one here, because we talked about putting in restricted, we talked about nothing, we probably talked about prorating.
Oh, and you just didn't understand? Rudy? Silly.
Yeah, I know.
That is one thing that us politicians do very well. We just, you know, assume he knew.
Right, just discuss.
I'm comfortable with either approach, whatever, you know, you, you think is, is.
Well, considering that we're running a ten point six million dollar deficit, even, even though it's only eighteen thousand, I would prefer to not have it in restricted, and I would prefer to.
I, I, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, so I would say just eliminate it.
Okay, so we'll put that on our list.
Okay.
The next one is number twelve, which is overtime in the Attorney's Investigation Division. I do not remember why there was a difference.
So same thing, I talked to them and said, hey, would it be a, would it be a deal breaker if I did not approve that? Now, keep in mind, this is just an addition to the overtime. So they have overtime. This would be an additional twenty-one thousand. And I called and said, how angry would you be if I just said, we don't have, we don't have money? And they said they'd be fine with that. So I, my recommendation on this one would be that we not approve, considering that they said they could, they could make do, and if they can't, they'll come back to us mid-year.
Okay.
So let's get rid of item number twelve. Eliminate that as well.
I'm comfortable with that. Learned in a, in a UAC training, we don't do as many budget amendments as other counties, I don't know if it's good or bad, but I was shocked to hear that, like Davis County does, almost six a year type, like, and then.
They have more staff than us. They have a way higher tax rate.
Well, that's, it's what I want to point out, right? Like, you know, I don't, I think it's, I think it's very telling how Utah County, you know, doesn't use that. And I think that it started to get, in my opinion, overused during COVID, perhaps, and so just want to point that out.
We, we try to put a lot of time in working with the commissioners, the departments, and everyone to come up with a, what we believe is a realistic budget, but, you know, you do have to come back at times.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Number six.
Oh, yeah. Six, I had thirty-one thousand and, yeah, and the other two had a hundred and thirty-one thousand. That would be another one where I spoke with them and said, when this was asked, they had unfilled positions that they felt they would need time limited to help cover, and those positions are now filled, but with the understanding, now, this is one that maybe we should put in restricted, and then if they need it, they can come back for it. Are you comfortable with, on item number six, if we put a hundred thousand of the hundred and thirty-one thousand in restricted? Are you comfortable with on item number six, if we put a hundred thousand of the hundred and thirty one thousand in restricted?
Yeah, but yeah, if you've spoke with the attorney's office and.
Once again, when we're talking about, this is increased from what they have. Okay, what what we had in the prior year budget.
Right, right. In which case, I'd rather just eliminate it. And if they need it, we could do a major adjustment, but they already have a time limited budget. We can increase it by thirty one thousand, but maybe not the hundred thousand.
And I'm.
I spoke with them about.
Yeah, I'm comfortable. As well with that.
All right, so let's reduce that one by a hundred thousand.
But restricted or not?
Um, I would say not at this point. And then if they need it, we can do it. They, they have some in that fund. Do you, does anybody have pulled up how much they currently have that's not an addition?
Thirty one hundred for.
It's okay, let's go if we don't.
No, eleven, ten, or twelve hundred for that. We can, we can get it back to you. This isn't the prosecution.
Oh, yeah, we can get it back before next week. So I would say, I mean, I'm gonna lean on the side of cutting because we're in such a deficit. So I would say let's cut it. And then maybe if you don't mind making a note that I would like to see how much they have in that fund. Currently.
So we would make that a zero amount rather than.
Thirty one thousand.
We'll bring it to thirty one, okay.
Bring it to thirty one, instead of one thirty one. And then I could be, you know, depending on how much they have in that fund, we could. I could be convinced to change my mind.
Thank you. Um, the next one is related to the um the contract with Utah County Public Defenders Association, number forty six. Um, four hundred and twenty three thousand nine hundred, we, it, in the mid-year, we.
Wait, oh, there's some others.
Is there another?
There's some others that the numbers don't match.
I'm just looking at, oh, sorry, I shouldn't just be looking at blanks. I should be looking at numbers.
Yeah, so under, like, under elections, they've um they've requested eight hundred and eighty two thousand nine hundred and I said seven hundred and twenty thousand. So reduce that by about a hundred and sixty thousand.
And they're your portfolio. Have you spoke? Uh, or can you?
No, I went through it and just, so there's three numbers there. Basically, their overall budget, I looked at um and I, right now, if I compared that to twenty twenty and twenty twenty two, which that's a cyclical, so it would go every other year. The increase is almost like one point eight million over twenty twenty, and I reduced that by three hundred, three hundred thousand. So it's still a one point five million dollar increase over twenty twenty, which I think more than compensates for uh the inflation and the population growth. Uh, but still should leave plenty of money for a twenty twenty election. So I just reduce, so items number like twenty, I think it's twenty seven, twenty eight. Thirty one. Yeah, twenty seven, twenty eight, thirty one and forty two. I had a lower number and I based that on, literally what I did is I I looked at inflation and population growth. And my number showed that being a half a million dollar increase. They were, they requested a one point eight million dollar increase. I reduced that by three hundred thousand. And so I literally like gave them an extra million more than what I had as the county clerk in twenty twenty plus inflation plus population growth. It's still a million dollars more than I had. Um, it's just a three hundred thousand dollar reduction, more or less, from what they um, from what they asked for.
And the reference to twenty twenty, just for the public's benefit, that's because that was our last presidential year, which cost us a whole lot more to run an election.
Um, not only that, but there was a, this year there will be a Democratic presidential primary, but in twenty twenty, there was a Republican presidential primary as well. And there will not be this year. So it will be a significantly smaller year.
So with each of those is the recommendation to put it at the number that you had indicated, Commissioner Gardner.
Are you okay with that?
Well, for me, I had item twenty seven, twenty eight and thirty four in restricted.
The whole item?
I don't know. All three of those items.
Well, they will definitely need them. So I feel comfortable maybe not putting it in restricted, but giving a reduced amount. But that's just me, cause I know that they're gonna need, like, coming right out of the chute, they're gonna need to start utilizing those. And for us to have to approve it, um, they're gonna have ballot design and printing and contracts literally coming almost immediately. So I felt comfortable not putting it in restricted, giving them the flexibility with not having to have two commissioners approve it, but reducing the amounts by three hundred thousand total.
Yeah, and like item forty two, we're not talking about a lot, right?
Right, but, right. In fact, that one, it was literally, they said they would like six of these, but they could get by with four. Well, it's a ten million dollar deficit. I said, if you can get by by four with four, we're gonna, you know, then I would say four. So these are things like literally in the notes for the request, it said we could get by with four. So that's why I reduced that by four. The other ones, it's still a significant increase, even when taking into account inflation and population growth over what we used in twenty twenty, what our actuals were for twenty twenty. But I would caution away from restricted, just because I think that they'll need it right away.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
So to be clear, number twenty seven, twenty eight, thirty one.
Thirty four and forty two.
Thirty four and forty two. So thirty four, we all had the same amount, but you wanted it in restricted and so.
Oh, I would say no unrestricted.
And then forty two, so we would fund that amount there, okay? Okay. Moving on to the next one, number forty six, which is the contract for the public defenders. They came to the commission with a request for an increase in the, their contract amount in last, last fall. The commission gave them half of that, and so this is the other half.
So like, it looks, it looks like we have three different numbers there. I see four hundred and twenty three thousand nine hundred for Commissioner Gordon, zero for me, and three point seven million for Commissioner Sakovic.
This is one where I'm, I'm comfortable with the four twenty three because, you know, it's a commitment that you know, Commissioner Sakovic and I had, had voted on, you know. So I'm, I know that Commissioner Sakovic's number is the, the full three point seven, but I'm not, I'm not willing to go there. Currently, but.
Sorry, finish.
No, I was gonna say, so, I mean, I know that uh, I know how you feel about it, but uh, I'm at a minimum, I'm, I'm going, I'm going to the, to the four twenty three nine.
Right, so I'm, I'm a no on the four twenty three for two reasons. Number one, for consistency's sake, because I voted no on the original amount. So this is me being consistent on that vote. The second reason is because since then, they have filed a motion with the court stating that they can't do aggravated murder defense and our contract with them states that they will do aggravated murder defense. And so my reasoning behind that is if they're not going to do a portion of their contract, then why do they need the other four hundred thousand? Right? Cause we actually are gonna need that money to pay an outside attorney to do the job that our contract with them says that they would do. So I'm a no on that, just because, for those two reasons. Number one, consistency, I didn't vote for it in the first place, because ten million dollar deficit. Uh, the second reason is because we are, we need, we need to use the money to pay for aggravated murder defense. But I'm a little confused with the, um, and maybe Rudy, you can help me with this, cause I'm just looking at, at high, high level numbers. But it looks like Commissioner Sakovic approved three point seven, which would include a salary study adjustment for the public defenders, but he didn't approve a salary study adjustment for the prosecutors.
That's correct.
So perhaps there will be items like this that a week from now.
I agree.
Then we might be able to discuss publicly with, with him.
Yeah, let's highlight that to discuss with him when he's here, cause that's a little confusing.
Originally, his amount was the four hundred and twenty three thousand, and that's why it's showing up in that column, but that was increased subsequent to the full amount that the public defenders were asking for for this year.
But to be clear, I'm not comfortable going to the three point seven, but I am comfortable with my number as well. I will say that now.
Also, the methodology in this was that we, we, if two said yes and there was no other vote, then we went with the minimum of the two, and that's why it's there as well.
Right, okay. So, and that's fine. I mean, that's obviously one we'll discuss next week, cause we have three different numbers.
Number fifty five is the next one. And and I think perhaps, this is one that we were going to do an internal uh, work for the, the electronic encounter forms for the health department. We were gonna do it internally and subsequently has decided that they were gonna have to outsource that. And so there was a contract for doing that, which was a three-year agreement. And so this hundred and thirty thousand represents one of the three years on that contract.
So I approved it because we have a signed contract for it. And I think it's approved with ARPA funds. So it's ARPA funds and we've, uh, we have an existing signed contract that obligates us for the funds, which is why I approved it.
But you've got two commissioners under the approval, so I don't know.
It's just cause there was a difference in, in the commissioners here. The, the next one, so we will approve that a hundred and thirty thousand four hundred. The, well, we'll put it in the number for next week for approval. Um, number sixty one, there was a que- request by the Health Department for a pool sampling vehicle for the Environmental Health Group. Um, two commissioners said yes. Commissioners, um, Gardner did not affirm that one.
Did you have any other information, being the portfolio that makes?
No, just that it's one of those years that we need to be tight in the vehicle for pool sampling, when they're already running a four six, eight, eight million dollar deficit. I had to do math in my head. An eight million dollar deficit, I just said no. No other information.
Maybe we table that for next week, cause if Tom and I both said yes. Excuse me, Commissioner Sakovic. I feel, I feel with all departments, I feel like everybody did a great job in the Health Department, seeing that slide where they, they cut substantially. Like, like a lot of departments, so. I'm inclined to leave that currently, but.
Which is our next one, Gina?
That was fifty eight eight, right?
Yeah, that was sixty one. Yeah, it was fifty eight thousand. It was item number sixty one. So I'm looking right now for next week for discussion. We have items forty six, fifty five and sixty one. Other than that, we've been able to come to consensus.
Then the next one is number one, one twenty two. And this.
That's the next one we have a discrepancy on? That's pretty good.
Yeah. I mean, there was one, one fifteen was removed and that was at the department's request.
Yeah, okay, so it was, it was one.
Yeah, so one, we're down here for one, one twenty two. And this is just an increase in employee recognition. This was one that, we'd asked the commissioner at the beginning of how we want to address um employee recognition. There, the policy changed last year, where we, we added increases that are available for the departments to provide employee recognition for current employees and for retiring employees. And, and so there was a
I remember, and I was the one that said no, and I'm fine changing my vote and agreeing with you and Commissioner Sakovic. So I will say we can, we can add that in.
Okay, so.
And that's not the only one, though.
No, there's, there's several of them throughout. And, and, and what I'd requested the commissioners, that either, if we do one, we need to do them all.
Okay, so I think I was the one that had the off-the-wall idea here, so maybe I should explain it. So my thought on this one was for any department that has, that's uh, that has more than like, say, twenty employees. Have them utilize any, because this is a personnel line item, meaning employee appreciation uh, is something that we use to um, almost like a benefit. I, any department that has over twenty employees, I would say use unused eleven hundred funds for that, so that it doesn't show in a, in a bigger budget deficit. Any department with less than twenty employees oftentimes doesn't have that many unused um eleven hundred funds. So then we could put theirs, so we could put theirs uh, in, like in a restricted or we could fund theirs. I'm not a hundred percent set on that. This was just one way of trying to get our deficit down.
And then that particular one is thirty five hundred dollars.
In human resources.
HR.
How many full-time employees does HR have?
Yeah, they're on the verge.
Oh, yeah, so they would be funded.
Say HR, surveyor.
Treasurer.
Treasurer.
Maybe Children's Justice Center.
Yeah, there's a.
There's like a, just a handful.
Would you be okay if we table this and see how the other commissioner feels about it? Because I mean, it's.
And I could go either way. This was just an idea that I had to, you know, at the end, at the end of the year, we end up having a ton of eleven hundred unused funds and right, but I wanna make sure that the employees get the appreciation. So, okay, I, I'm fine waiting on that. But it does need to be funded, whether we fund it through just funding it, or whether we fund it through.
Yeah, it'll give me some more time to.
Unused eleven hundred. It should be funded.
I didn't mean to cut you off. I was gonna say that it'll give me some more time to add up that information, because maybe perhaps Commissioner Sakovic, you know, in, in his mind of not, you know, not thinking raises, maybe he would say, well, you know, maybe depending on how that money adds up, that it's. He might wanna think that separately. I don't know.
All right, what's our next line?
Uh, the back of my mind, I think the total countywide was about roughly between both pieces, about fifty thousand dollars or so. Okay, the next one is actually number one thirty four. And, and this one here if I remember, this one right here, so, so currently we have, we have ARPA funding some time-limited employees in the, in the IT department. This is a request for the current year, but the current year is being funded by ARPA. So I'm, my opinion is that it's not really needed, but this is a, really a warning for next year that we ought to be able thinking about considering this one for next year, but I don't think we need, actually need it for this year. And this is an IT.
So just for consistency's sake, I had voted originally to allocate those ARPA funds for it, so I'm fine approving that. With them recognizing that if they don't use it, those are gonna get clawed back before the end of the year and reallocated. That was my thought on it, was that I had, I had already voted for it with ARPA funds.
And Commissioner Sakovic voted yes on, well, he voted yes on that one as well, so we do have two commissioners. So do we want to include that one in there?
It's up to you. I'm still a no. And so, but I understand that you originally voted for it. And so in an effort to also claw down the deficit, you know.
This one, this one wouldn't hit the deficit.
That's true.
ARPA funds.
But going.
Yeah. Well, I'm fine moving forward with it in the budget, because Commissioner Sakovic and I both voted yes on it, and it doesn't affect the deficit.
Good point.
Okay, so we'll leave that one in there. It can be brought up next week if we need to. Now, the ni- the next one, um, we do have two commissioners that have voted for most of the next six or seven, from one thirty nine through one one forty two. I'm not sure how that numbering works, but I think it's because, oh, oh, I know why. It's because it includes salaries and startup costs and all that kind of thing. So the, so, so the Public Works has requested a custodial service, services supervisor and a facilities maintenance specialist, two positions and, and HVAC mechanic. And those are the three Commissioner Sa- um, Gordon, or Commissioner Gordon and Commissioner Sakovic voted to approve these. Commissioner Gardner did not. So I don't know if we want, if there's a discussion to be had here or no.
I mean, I'm, I'm still, I'm still a no on on those. What, what, what I actually, it's not a straight no. What I wanted to do was tell them that with budget being so tight this year, that they could pick one, but I didn't wanna pick which one for them. So I wanted to say fund a hundred and forty thousand. Each one of these positions is roughly a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And so I would say give them a hundred and forty thousand dollars in a restricted and then come to us with a um with a staffing plan change for one of those positions and I would approve it. So that was my thought on it, is just can't afford all of them. We can give you one. Which one do you need the most? Come to us with the staffing, you know, we'll put the money in a restricted account and come to us with a
And all of these are in the building maintenance fund.
Right, so they're all in the same fund.
And they'll be allocated out to different departments or whomever as their, their services are being used.
Yeah, and my rough estimate is that anything that comes from like a building maintenance fund, about half of that hits the general fund.
Yeah, correct.
Right? So if they're asking for four positions at a hundred and forty thousand dollars each, right, then we're looking at six hundred thousand dollars at the three hundred thousand dollar hit to the general fund, roughly. Back of the napkin math. And so my thought was give them one and say, come to us with the one you need the most.
Also had item one thirty eight, the uh, project manager in restricted, so I was also thinking that uh, you know, as they work towards that new position, um, I know all three of us, it looks like, is saying yes to that. that, um, they could also sort of ham and egg the other positions if they needed to first. I, I don't know, I, I did.
I'm a firm yes on the project manager, I think we've needed one for.
I know that about you.
Especially since the ARPA money came, right, they've been just so overloaded. I mean,
But I see.
Two hundred and forty thousand dollars at a, I mean, two hundred and forty million dollars at a, at a department, and they tend to get overloaded, so I, I feel that they absolutely need that, but.
I understand your, your wisdom, uh, thinking behind, you know, the other three positions, and maybe that's just a conversation we have with, over the next week, perhaps? Just similar to, you know, uh, asking to identify priorities again, saying, hey, you know?
Yeah, I'm a firm yes on the project manager, I think it is absolutely necessary, I think that the, um, I think that will help the Public Works Department a lot. Like I said, on that, on the other positions, I was a yes on one.
I guess what I was trying, let me clarify, if, if one of those positions were more important to our Public Works Director, is kind of my thinking. Would that, would that trump a decision, or change a decision for, for you?
The project manager?
Yeah, if they were like, okay.
No.
Understood.
I am a firm that we need that project manager.
Okay, let's, let's maybe wait and see how Commissioner Sakovic, um, and then I can have another conversation with.
Uh, specifically on the project manager, correct, because all three of you did approve, have that in your recommendations. So, do we want to hold on to that one?
The discussion is more with the other positions, right, like, how many does he want to approve? I could be talked into approving two, but.
Yeah.
I, I put in my budget one, I would prefer one, I could be talked into two, but it's just, in a year like this, it's hard to afford more than that.
So we'll stay with the yes on one thirty-eight.
I, yeah. I think so, I think just.
And we'll hold it till next week, that's great.
I think, I think we'll have.
Okay.
Another conversation.
So we'll hold.
That'll be items one thirty-eight, one thirty-nine, one forty.
And one forty-two.
Two.
If that's okay.
Yep.
Yeah, that sounds good, and we, we can engage the three commissioners on, on this issue throughout the next week if we would like. What's our next one, Gina? One fifty, one fifty-four. Um, and this is time limited in Public Works, and this is in the Parks area, they requested twenty-four hundred additional. Um, two commissioners said.
Oh, you know what, I'm.
Yeah.
I'm realizing this is a TRCC fund, not.
Yes.
So that wouldn't fall through to the other funds at all, right? Okay, I will, I'm fine, I'm fine changing my vote to align with that of Commissioners Gordon and Sakovic on that one.
So we'll stick with the twenty-four hundred in this number here, okay?
Yep, stick with the twenty-four hundred on that one.
And. The next one, one fifty-seven is in the Transportation, um, and Roads Fund. A hundred dollars, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I said on that one, it's like, it's a hundred dollars, why is it in my budget? We just spent more than a hundred dollars discussing it at this moment.
I would agree.
That's the only reason I didn't approve it. But if the other two approve it, great.
Yeah, so we.
I'm not going to get in an argument over.
I'm, I'm just smiling really big right now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm surprised I let that one get through, to be honest with you. One sixty-eight.
Okay, so we're gonna come up with a bunch in the, in the Sheriff's Department that I didn't fund, but the other two did. So here's my thinking behind that. Um, this is where my negotiation with you, Commissioner Gordon, comes in. I totaled my approvals for the Sheriff's Department, and it was like five hundred and thirteen thousand and change. I totaled yours, and it was like seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand and change. And I really don't like the idea that I'm looking at asks from the sheriff and saying, I think you should get this and this, but not this and this, because guess what? I'm not a public safety expert, he is, and unlike like with Public Works, where it's an appointed position, and we're responsible for that, he's an independently elected official, so I was thinking on this one, what if we take the difference? So between like my five hundred and thir- my, you know, my five hundred thousand and change, and your seven hundred and thousand and change? And instead of us attempting to dictate to the sheriff what he should use for public safety, what if we split it? And say, let's give him an equipment and special supplies line item of six hundred thousand dollars, and he picks what he spends it on.
And, and you're just referencing equipment?
Yes, I'm not talking about positions, this is not staffing positions, this is just the equipment. So just the equipment additional asks, there was close to a million. I funded like five hundred and thirteen thousand in my first pass, you funded like seven hundred thousand in your first class. So my idea on this was what if we meet in the middle? We come to a consensus at six hundred thousand, we stick it on a line item that says special supplies and equipment. And then, since he's an independently elected official, and he's accountable to the people, that he decides what he spends it on, instead of us trying to micromanage that for him.
Um, how, how does that compare, how do, how do we compare with Commissioner Sakovic, I guess? I see your.
So Commissioner Sakovic approved all of these requests, I believe, so he's higher. I mean, he's, I mean, he's.
So he would be around a million, because it was about a million dollars in asks.
Yeah, roughly, um, I think he approved every single one of them.
And, I'm gonna caveat this by saying, Sheriff, I know that you didn't ask for things you don't need, I know that all of this is necessary, we just can't afford it. Right, so, m- my default would be to say, we are currently looking at a ten, somewhere between a ten and twelve million dollar deficit. We gotta do something, if I just give it to you, I would rather have you decide what to spend it on, than me try to dictate that to you.
And, and what we could, what we could do is we could take this amount, we can, so we would, from their requests, several of them are positions. So we would take those positions off and look at the remainder, and we could, you know, make sure that they fit within what, what their needs are.
Yeah, so, so I, there's a bunch of these that I said yes to, but a bunch of these that I said no to, but instead, it's like, can we just give you six hundred thousand dollars and you decide? Like, that's what I would rather do.
So like.
So we're gonna like, split it in the middle.
If, um.
So instead of like items one fifty-four, or whatever, through like two hundred and, whatever, I think it was like, I think you had like sixty-seven high priority asks, or whatever. Instead of me saying, spend your six hundred thousand dollars on those sixty-seven asks, besides that, your list might change throughout the year. Right, something might come up, and your priority might change, so I, my answer to that is.
Well, one thing that was very helpful throughout our process was the sheriff prioritizing the things. And that changed, because also, there was some communication of how priorities, right? Changed, like, there were some things that legislatively, the sheriff, you know, felt, well, this is mandated, and if one item, for example, I said no, um, after, you know, um,
Was that a.
Your priorities list changed, and I think a conversation with Buff, am I, is that making sense? Am I saying that correctly?
Uh, that's my point, is that like, I think it could change again.
It could, and originally, we'd, we would receive requests from the lieutenants. And Mike, and, and Buffton came and said, wait, hold on, this is what we think are the priorities, so then we got that new one through sixty-seven priority.
Right, and, and based on changing dynamics in the community, I could see that list changing again. So I just, I just, particularly with an, with an elected official in an area where you've got the expertise and we don't, I don't like the idea that I'm dictating to you what you spend it on, I think it works better. My job is to oversee the budget, we're gonna see all your POs anyway, right? So, I'm not afraid you're gonna go spend it on lollipops and rainbows, right, I'm not afraid of that. But that's not the area I have the expertise, I wasn't elected to micromanage a fellow elected official, I was elected to set a budget. And so I would rather just consolidate these items, give him a number, and say, I'm really sorry that we couldn't give you everything he asked for, it's a really tough year, but this is what we could afford. You spend it on what your judgment tells you we need.
So what you're saying is you and I are currently a hundred and sixty-five K difference on, on the Sheriff's Department, and, and.
And I'm willing to.
You're saying if I came up between the eighty, eighty-two, five, right? If you were to split the difference, is what, is what you're saying, so.
Right.
Let me see what that means.
I would come up eighty-two, five.
Right.
You'd come down pretty close to eighty, right, so it's pretty close to halfway.
So what I'd like to do is just take, assuming we wait a week, and I want to see how many priorities.
Do you want to see what the cutoff line is?
I had a cutoff line.
Okay.
With the Sheriff's Department, and I knew I could fund to, you know, this line item. Now I want to see where that, how, how much that needle moves, because there are some items that are, you know, quite small, five thousand dollars, maybe for, um, you know, helmets, or wha- what have you, I don't know, and so, I wanna, I wanna get with, you know, the sheriff or Buff, and just kind of see if we can massage that, so.
Yeah, and that would be fine, uh, alternatively, we, we could, we could meet with them and kind of.
Is, I mean, does that, is that?
Let, let's say we have a six hundred thousand dollar amount, we can meet with them, we will have to assign those to budget lines, so we're gonna have to help work with them to assign that where, where we need it, and perhaps we could, we could get together in the next couple of days, and we could go through that with them, and kind of, you know, go through that list and get, see where we get with that. If, if that works, if you have a number, and we say that we want to go with six hundred thousand, if that's it, or seven, or whatever the number may be.
Okay.
So by not, by not leaving it out, you're gonna cause a huge headache for them when it comes to budget. I mean, pretty suggestion as far as, here's the dollar amount, and then the budget team meeting with him and saying, okay, knowing not, where, where are you?
Yeah.
What are you willing to take out? We'll at least make it clean.
Okay.
Um, and will not help, like, January one, they can spend their money, and they don't have to, oh, I gotta move, and I gotta move, and.
Right, and I'm totally fine however it works best for you.
Yeah.
Right, however it works best for, makes it easier.
Absolutely.
I don't want to cause headaches, I also just don't want to micromanage.
Yeah.
And maybe a priority changes.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, and.
Right.
And maybe, maybe I come back and I say, actually, instead of eighty-two thousand, can I get, you know, are you willing to? Because currently, Commissioner Sakovic and I are, right, already approving this, this.
Yeah, so, I mean, if, if you give us a tentative, you know, kind of a, a number, we can meet with them, and we can kind of come with that, and we can get that back to you guys, and, um, come with it, and then we, then you can make, make further decisions perhaps next week on this.
Yeah, there's also other things, like, I'm noticing like the heater for the greenhouse, um, is currently listed in general fund. And I'm wondering, maybe, maybe that's an inmate benefit, because they get to hang out in the greenhouse. Maybe there's a couple of places we could put that, that doesn't affect our deficit.
Yeah.
Right, because that, that fund has like a million dollars in it. Right, and it's a program. Like, you don't have it for the, like, your officers aren't the ones hanging out in there, like, it's the inmates that are the ones raising those plants, right? So there may be a few items like that, that you could put, instead of general fund, you could put into inmate benefit, if it's truly an inmate, you know, benefit. And then that would actually move your line of the six hundred thousand dollars, right?
So we'd be, can we get together in the next few days or so, and kind of go through this? Yeah, absolutely, no, I mean, I, I, my goal is, I, I just want to make sure it's all slotted into the right, you know, to cost centers and, and things, so that we can get it into the budget, but yeah. I mean, it, it'd be your, you guys would be the one, they would be the ones directing, you know, where we put this to, so, yeah.
Without knowing the number.
Yeah, that's the question.
That's exactly, you currently have two commissioners that have approved, uh, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars.
I'm just.
And so.
Trying to reduce our deficit as much as possible.
Asking us to reduce it, and so, uh, you know.
You might come back and say, hey, we've looked at it, and we can't do more than six fifty, but I would prefer six hundred is what I would like. And I still, and I think that's pretty generous, considering it came up eighty-two thousand, right?
Sure.
So, that's all I ask, is that we go through this, and we try to save a hundred thousand or two.
We'll get together, my, my, my one concern with the Sheriff's Department, too, is, is the, uh, you know, I was a no on the, the school resource officer position.
Officer, yeah.
Sheriff and I had a brief conversation Monday night about that, and there's still maybe some conversations that we need to have about that, because that's it. Then we, we wouldn't be arguing over eighty thousand dollars if that new position at two hundred and, or excuse me, two hundred and sixty-three thousand? That's, that's a big thing, and if, you know, if two, two hundred and fifty schools in the county, you know, need this position, we're not, we're probably not gonna make her, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
So, so, there's also, I think, some more conversations to have in that. I just shifted that after the lieutenant's priorities from Buffton's priorities kind of changed. And then, having a confidential assistant of mine that did that for a number of years, we kind of thought, maybe, maybe we could have a conversation about, maybe, that, those duties being divvied up, so, anyway.
And I'm open to that conversation as well.
That's probably the first time you're hearing that conversation that I've had with my portfolio, so.
My ears are perking up.
Yeah, so.
If you, I mean, I will follow your lead.
So what, your numbers.
That's one that I was a yes on, but if you're saying that you have a different priority.
No, that, that priority statement, I mean, the law has passed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I've got it funded.
So your, your number, I think, was seven hundred and fifty, roughly?
Seven seventy-eight.
Seven seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight, mine was five thirteen.
Six thirteen.
So.
Six thirteen, five.
Thirteen, that's why I said six hundred.
Then we're a lot further, oh, you, oh, I see.
I was five thirteen, you were seven seventy-eight.
I was thinking, okay.
You see what I'm.
So we're arguing over a little more money than I thought, because I was thinking, I'm not gonna, I'm, you know, I'm not gonna, how do I say this? I, I don't want the sheriff to have the tools that he needs.
I agree.
And I, I've heard you say that, and I want to make sure, I think all three commissioners.
How about if we go, we do this, and we'll, we'll meet with the department, and we'll kind of cost them out, between those two, that range, up to seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, and cost it out, and see what we would buy with that money, and then we can kind of get it scheduled.
Between six hundred and seven seventy-eight, so we can.
Sure, six hundred and seven seventy-eight.
Like I said, I mean.
Yeah, because you'll come up, would that, would that be a, a solution, we can come back with that for next week's meeting?
And then next week's meeting, if we can come back with a number that we can negotiate, I would, that would be great.
And, and appreciated the point out of if there is something, I mean, the greenhouse, the quick, that quick discussion, maybe there is some other.
I just saw that, right?
Something, that was just quick, I don't know, maybe there's something else that we can communicate with, so.
Right.
Okay, so.
So we want to skip to the position for the Sheriff's?
Yes, yeah, let's skip, because that basically all, that would.
Uh, I think they're all there, oh. Yeah, I mean, and the, the issue with, with two oh one is that they initially requested four nurses and two, um, social workers for jail medical, and the discussions came down and said, well, how about if we do one or two nurses and one social worker potentially, so there's, there's four lines in here. There's two, two oh one, which includes two nurses, I think it's benefits and, and salary. And, and then we have the two for the others, so that's, I, I think everybody seemed to be.
So I had said, my preference was two nurses, one social worker.
Yeah.
Those numbers on my, that are all matching up, right, with all three.
It looks like you, everybody came to consensus on those, though, I think, now, so.
Does that, did everybody say two nurses?
Correct, so.
All the numbers match.
Yeah, so it'd be two nurses and one social worker. Yeah, and that's the other question.
And then the other ones in restricted, in case they're needed.
Correct.
Right, like, if these, if these get full, and there's a dire need, then they're in restricted if we have to.
Yeah.
The only, the only thing is, is, again, this is, the way the process isn't working, is when we explain this, those are shifts. So, it makes it difficult, that's, that's, so you have that coverage twenty-four seven, that's not just like, hey, two nurses. So, it's more than just saying, hey, if you need two now, maybe two later, it's to increase, to have that coverage for each shift.
So, an all or nothing? Uh, uh, like, is what you're saying.
You need one nurse, but you need four to give the twenty-four seven coverage.
Okay, I was thinking you needed two new nurses, and two would give you twenty-four seven coverage for one position. What about the social worker, because that's, you only asked for two on that one.
And they're, those aren't twenty-four seven.
Okay, so that's why the difference, because that's not a twenty-four seven position.
So we, let, let's, let's revisit, if we could, just that, just so we don't.
And I'll, I'll give you some, some more information to look at.
Yeah, let's look at that.
Let's make sure.
So let's look at that for next, next week.
Because, because that may come into the previous conversation about the dollars that are available.
Exactly what I was thinking, that could come in, depending on what we do with the dollars, there might be money for that, okay?
Okay, the next one is, oh, number two oh five is directly related to the nurses, if we hire the full-time nurses, then there's, there's less of a need for, um, time-limited nurses to fill those shifts, there would still be a need, but this would be reducing a prior number down.
So let's discuss that one, we discussed the others.
Five needs to be discussed, yeah.
Yeah, that's part of that same discussion.
Sounds good.
Um.
Right, next.
Oh, the, and two fifteen is part of that other discussion. Oh, the, and two fifteen is part of that other discussion, same thing with two eighteen. Inmate benefit, what's our next one, Gina? Oh, two twenty-four was one that, there's a differing amount on here. And as we had a further discussion here, we realized that this is actually being requested out of Fund two seventy-three, which is inmate benefit.
Okay, then I would say yes, I'll, I can, I can align with Commissioner Gordon on that at a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. That works.
See, I just gave you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So impressed.
That's a cuff course. Is it, is it all or nothing on that?
Do you have my notes of what I was thinking when I said one fifty? Okay.
So would you like to change yours to two fifty then?
If it's gotta take two fifty, if that's what, if that's what.
And that doesn't.
I just gave you two fifty, see? Okay, so we can go two fifty on that one.
Okay.
I, I had lumped that with the others, but seeing that that's out of a different fund, then I'm, then I'm okay with that.
Okay, um.
So.
I have a question, number two forty-four, there's a differing amount on here and it has come to light here over the last day or so that this trailer may have already been purchased. This is the one for the U, the, the grant-funded U T V. It's done, so this goes away.
Okay, so, great. There you go, see, twenty-three thousand off your list, we're just.
All right, um. That was, yeah, number two forty-four, so.
Yeah, two forty-four is gone, so then.
Yeah, we're looking, finding, we're, we're going here.
To, let's see, two sixty-five, no, that would all be.
We get down to three. Two eighty-seven and two eighty-eight? Oh, okay, two eighty-seven and two eighty-eight are the S V U detectives that were requested, two of them. And it's kinda weird the way this looks on here because this is splitting out salaries, benefits, onboarding costs, vehicle, gun, you know, all that kinda stuff. But it's really, all this is two eighty-seven, two eighty-eight, it's two, it's two positions.
It's, all the numbers are aligning, so what are we looking at here?
This is the same conversation as the nurses, probably.
It's a question of whether, I think there was a, you, a nation was to put one of them.
I had funded one.
One and put the other one potentially in restricted.
Yeah, and then once one gets hired and on-boarded, if the other is needed, then we've got it.
And I think that's how we have it shown in here right now anyways, I just wanna make sure that we're all clear on that.
Yep.
Okay, so that's, it stays the same as it is. The rest of this is some of this other stuff we're gonna.
As I think through that, with that said, if we open up that job and we get two phenomenal candidates that we have to pick between, but we've got money for one in restricted, let us know. But if you open it up and you only get one decent candidate at that time, then you'll, then you open it again, makes sense.
That's what it looks like to me. So we'll switch to number, go to three thirty-four and three thirty-five. And these are a couple of items that, where they'd requested some additional funding for wildland fire.
Yeah, I'm fine with those. I had originally lumped those with, um, the other sheriff's requests, but knowing that that's at least two forty-eight is a different budget there.
Yeah, it is, and.
And fire mitigation, I'm okay with those inflationary increases on those, so you can change that and add those.
Okay. So our next one is. We go down to three eighty?
I feel like we're making progress.
Oh, yeah, so.
This was to move offices and we're not moving the office, so that's why I said no.
And so, yeah, that's three eighty and neither of you were on, in favor of that. And so if we're not moving the office right now, then that fifteen thousand dollars would not be needed immediately.
Right.
Yeah, that puts you, and then three eighty-one, um, we had two commissioners that were in favor. Commissioner Gordon, Gordon did not, um, recommend approving the reclassification, these are a couple of positions that they wanted to reclassify in the elections division.
So my thinking on that is that they are going to eliminate a position to help fund those.
And the.
That's why I had approved those.
And that's on the list that we've actually adjusted the salaries for that one position.
You've taken that one out. So this is item.
Three eighty-one and three eighty-two.
Yeah, three eighty-one and three eighty-two, these are existing positions, reclassifying existing positions and eliminating another position. So I'd said yes.
Yeah, you've got two votes there, but I'm comfortable with, and I'm comfortable with that, with your, you know, O L recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, three eighty-eight's just a little weird looking, what we, that's for the auditor's office. We originally had some time-limited position and we wanted to make these other changes that are listed on here. So we said, we'll reduce our time limited by thirty-nine thousand dollars to cover those.
To fund those other ones?
Yeah, and that's the only reason why that's on there, it looks, looks funny, but you were all in agreement with the changes we were making.
Yep.
Four eighteen is jail food services, civilian uniforms. Um, two commissioners did say yes on that, Commissioner Gardner did not.
I just put that in the same, in the same boat.
Yeah, so we'll leave that with the same.
The other funds.
Yeah, okay, we'll consider that with, it is Fund six twenty, which is the jail food ser, the jail kitchen. So it's not general fund.
What is the jail kitchen looking like on?
Six twenty.
Give me one second, oh. Is there, what is the fund balance currently in that account?
Do you get fund balance for six twenty? Six twenty, we'll grab that in here for a second.
I mean, if it's gotta help the fund balance and they wanna pull that out of the fund balance, I'm fine with that.
It's not a super healthy fund balance.
Well, I mean, it's only fourteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's not huge.
So if they, I mean, cuz what, what it's looking like in that account is that that's where it would come out of, would be that account, fund balance.
Correct.
And if they want to use the account fund balance for that, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Right, cuz it looks like the current, the current budget is pulling three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars out of budgeted use of fund balance in order to balance their budget, so if they wanna change that to.
Increase it a little bit.
Three hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred, I'm okay with that. Hold on.
Okay.
It looks like that would be general fund.
Four twenty, yeah.
It looks like that would pull general fund, so let, let's leave that in and, and discuss it with the other items, cuz even though it's jail kitchen, it'll pull out of, fund balance will pull out of general fund, so leave that in and let's discuss it with the other ones, okay?
The ballistic vessel transfer, those should have been, yeah.
Oh, okay, so.
Four fifty.
Four fifty-two is the assessor's office, I know, is, somebody from the assessor's office, do they wanna answer questions? I know Bert Garfield was online, but he was at a conference, I don't know if he's still there. Or if there's somebody else in the assessor's office that we can say specifically, what is this hundred thousand dollars?
Well, what, my understanding from discussions with the assessor's office is they would like to purchase a software program which would allow them to identify short-term rentals that are in the community. And because if we identify the short-term rentals, then their, their, their exemption goes away and so they get reassessed at a higher level. So his thought is that if we have this software and we're identifying these properties that it would end up paying for itself over the, you know, over, over time here, so that, that's the thought behind it.
So it would identify more, their hope would be that it would identify more than a hundred thousand dollars worth of lost property tax revenue.
Correct.
So here's.
That's the current fund balance, four hundred and sixty-one thousand, current fund balance in jail, in jail kitchen.
Oh, in jail kitchen, four hundred and sixty-one thousand? Okay, then I'm fine, never mind, we don't have to, we don't have to go back and put that with the others, you can just add that.
Okay.
Fourteen hundred.
Well, keep it in there then, so, so.
You've got two on this hundred thousand.
Yeah, we had two on this hundred thousand, so that, that's the story, that's what that is about. You know, originally they were thinking, well, they could, you know, get a bit, a little bit of, you know, extra, you know, revenue, but we don't, we don't have a, a, a tax or anything for that, so it's really, it's really property tax.
So here's, here's my issue on this one, so would it identify more than a hundred thousand dollars in revenue? Yes, but the vast majority of that revenue would go to the school district and would go to the city. And we're funding it and we're only gonna get, what, like, seven percent of that? So if it identifies a hundred thousand dollars of increased property taxes, we're getting seven thousand of that. So doing the math, we'd have to identify a lot to make that worth it for us, unless we were sharing the cost of that with the cities and the school districts. So.
Yeah, there.
Go ahead, Bert.
The other issue is labor savings, we spend a lot of time tracking down these short-term rentals and it's not very productive, so this would speed up the process.
Okay. Is that an area that you're, is that an area that we're perpetually unable to fill positions? Is that why, is that what you're thinking that it is?
Sort of, we have people do it, but it's not really their primary responsibility. We probably have in a county about two or three hundred short-term rentals actually identified. Two different vendors have done some analysis on their county, on the county. They think we have about fifteen hundred to two thousand short-term rentals, so we're really not even scratching the surface with the staff we have. So we either have to invest in more people or technology or just not try very hard to get this done. But it seems like the right thing to do is rely on some technology to help us do it without really having to hire any more people.
I think it keeps us from hiring more people and brings in revenue, I think that does pay for itself.
Yeah, and, and this is an ongoing hundred thousand dollar a year.
Right.
We think we gotta vendor do it for less, um, so it'll probably be less, but we don't, we haven't gotten to that point to really know for sure, so that's the situation.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Okay. Commissioner Gordon, you did not vote in favor of that one.
That's correct. I have a personal experience where a brother-in-law that's from Texas has a couple here in Provo. Provo has made the decision to, you know, find him and basically eliminate them from being able to do that. And I personally think that we're doing a disservice by not allowing an Airbnb in, in such a great city as Provo, personally, that, uh, the people that tend to, to have historically rented before he could no longer, um, were going to Sundance and spending money in our county. And so those were some of my thinking, but, but that's a Provo.
Just to be clear, we're not.
That's not, yeah.
Yeah, we're not, we're not really enforcing anything with it, we're just identifying them for, uh, tax purposes. So they don't get the primary residential exemption, they have to go to a secondary residential exemption.
Yeah, and, and, and Commissioner Gordon, in my former city where I was at, they took the position of trying to exterminate them and it was extremely labor-intensive too, yeah.
So.
But, but.
So your concern is that we're doing some of the legwork for a policy that you don't agree with.
Well, I do agree with, like, the people paying their fair share.
Right.
As it pertains to taxes, absolutely, but, but yeah, the, the, the fear I have is the identifying of, you know, and then more cities saying, we will not allow a short-term rental, where, but, um, that's not a county issue. That's certainly a city issue, um, but, but regardless, we have two votes, if, if, if changing mine.
I mean, with that said, I still think that us finding, us utilizing technology to reduce our labor force or our needs for our labor force is a good thing, particularly in this economy. However, I'm more than willing to work with you to work with the legislature.
Well, I love that what, uh, elected assessor Bert Garfield just said, uh, in terms of, we think we've got it for less. Um, you know, so I just, I just had it out of my budget in terms of cutting money at this time, but if.
Can we put it in restricted and then, um, the amount that he needs, we can put in? So instead of putting the full hundred thousand dollars in the budget, we put it in restricted and then see what the bids come back at?
Sure, that's totally doable.
Right, and then.
That's fine.
Okay, yeah, and then if the bids come back at less, hallelujah, that just means less that we'll take out of the fund balance for the A and C fund.
Is, uh, I should know this, is the assessor your portfolio or is it Commissioner Sakovic's?
It's not mine, so.
So, okay, then I had had that conversation with Bert and so I appreciate that clarification.
Okay, so.
Yeah, it.
Go ahead, Bert.
Yeah, it's, it's mostly for product, productivity reasons more than enforcement reasons.
Okay.
And we believe that we are missing a lot of tax revenue based upon this. And like Commissioner Powers Gardner says, it's not gonna really come to the county as much as you, but I still think directionally is the right way to go.
But the labor savings will, so.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
We're, we're moving along here pretty well, so the next one I see is number four sixty-eight. And, and this is one where Commissioner Gordon and Commissioner, um, Gardner were in the same camp here. And this is adding a senior office specialist for the county administrator.
So this is one that was, I was confused that Commissioner Sakovic, which we can, as, we can mention him, but I'm confused that Commissioner Sakovic didn't approve this because he was the one who requested this.
Maybe we wait a week.
Yeah, I mean, I would tentatively add it, but let's discuss it because we have two commissioners that voted yes and the third commissioner is the one that requested it, so let's tentatively add it, but discuss it.
Now, there was also.
I mean.
Sorry.
Yeah, it could have been an oversight.
There was also a little bit of a, of a comments that we heard along the way about perhaps putting in a restricted for now and then later on at the year, cuz not knowing the timing of this, but, um.
Well, the only, yes, we could do that. The only, the only thing on that is like, if it's restricted, we're, we're gonna ask the commissioners if the commissioners can spend the money. So it just, it would just add an extra administrative step, which I'm fine, I mean, I'm fine, if you wanna add an extra step for y'all, I'm cool with that.
Not my decision here.
But. It's just, it's not a necessary extra step.
That's fine, so we'll hold on to this, it's in there tentatively right now.
Yeah.
Then the, the next one was, was regarding the contract grant writer, the both of you approved it, Commissioner Sakovic did not.
That's another one that he was pretty insistent that we include, so I'm, that's another one that confuses me, yeah. That Commissioner Sakovic was insistent that we include. And the other part of that is we actually have a signed contract that goes through the end of twenty twenty-four with that individual.
Yeah.
So, um, while we can modify terms of that contract, we do have a signed contract through the end of, uh, twenty twenty-four, so we should probably pay for that contract. So I would leave it and we can mention it, but once again, that's an item that he was fairly supportive of in preliminary discussions.
Okay.
He was less on the aggregate aggravated murder defense.
Yeah, you know, th- there's a difference in the amount and that's because that one point one million is the buy-in. The three hundred and fifty, one point three five one million includes a first-year assessment in addition to the buy-in, so.
What line item is that?
One, four seventy-two.
Oh, excuse me, two, thank you.
Four, oh, that's, that's. Oh, the aggravated murder, so.
We can ask him next week, you've got, you've got to.
That's, I mean.
I think all three of us made a decision to go.
That's kind of a non-negotiable.
That we have enough money.
Price, there was like a bid price.
Yeah.
And, and so the public is aware that is a, uh, somewhat of an insurance policy for, um, prosecuting, uh, the death penalty. Some counties did not have enough money, they got hit with multiple in one calendar year and it's very quick to, to hurt you, so essentially this fund we buy into. And if we have six in a calendar year, then it's, it's covered through that fund.
Yeah, so to reiterate, that's one point three million dollars necessary to just defend the death penalty.
Which, as you mentioned earlier, you know, the public defender, you know. situation with them.
Yeah, they were contracted to do that and have decided that they cannot. So that's costing us an additional one point three million. Um, it is a little confusing that Commissioner Sakovic undercut that because that was a bid amount that we got from them that was like non-negotiable. It's a set rate.
I think he probably did not realize that three hundred thousand additional, what the first year amount was probably supposed to be included in that, but the amount's slightly.
So we can discuss it, but yeah, that's not really a just like the doors for the jail. It's like, that's how much it costs.
Yeah. These, this next group here for the health department, this looks kind of funny, but these are the things that we cut.
No, it doesn't look funny. This looks fantastic.
I mean, it looks fantastic, but normally.
Eric and his team did phenomenal work. I think we should all recognize them for working really hard and finding these cuts. Legitimately, they have spent weeks and I think probably about a month. And it was hard, hard work and they all came to the table and this is the result of that. And it adds up and we really appreciate your work, Eric and your team. You guys did a phenomenal, phenomenal job.
In addition to some revenue increases that were needed for quite a while.
Absolutely. Anybody else that wants to give us red numbers, we're, we're good.
Yeah, these are good. It's just, they just look a little different on our schedule here. So that's all I wanted to say. Number one forty-one is down here. This was something that was in the tentative budget, but none of, um, the first one, no, this.
Or fifteen.
No, I'm sorry.
One forty-one.
One forty-one, which is after all the red numbers. So what, what happened with this? If you had two people that voted for it, they're up in that top section. If there was one, that goes down in this lower section. And if there were none, it goes down below that. So this was, this is actually Commissioner Gordon. His initial approval was to say yes for these, for the billing maintenance painter. And the other two commissioners did not give it, uh, an approval for that one. A tentative approval.
Yeah, this, I, I put this in the same as the other positions where it's, hey, we can give you one. I might be able to talk, be talked into two, but we just can't afford everything. So.
So do we want to hold this until next week to have a discussion with Commissioner Sakovic on his thoughts or?
Yeah.
Should this just be? So we'll hold this one till next week. Um, the next one is for foster grandparents program and these are so for a couple of, uh, van drivers that they have in their.
So I, those were grant funded. That's why I had no problem funding those because they, they are grant funded. It's pass through.
Not sure why that didn't show up in there. So that's that one. Um, then there's another one on here for an elec- reclassifying election specialist position. Number three eighty-four, which had one commissioner recommendation, but not other two.
Um, I.
And this goes along with the other.
Because it was funded using the.
Reduction.
So we can change mine to say yes. Oh, no, mine is the one.
Yours is, yeah. So it would be one of the other two.
What do you say, Gordo? This is one that they funded eliminating a position. It's, it's just like the other two from elections.
It's number three eighty-four.
Three eighty-four. So it's the similar as the other two where they are reclassifying an existing position and they've eliminated the, uh, compliance. The compliance, elections compliance person to pay for it.
Okay. Eighty-seven hundred dollars. I'm.
Yeah. You good with that? Okay. Let's change that one to fund that.
And the rest of this list are ones that Commissioner Sakovic had vote, had tentatively, you know, his recommendation was yes, where neither of you had. Um, so.
My recommendation on these ones is that we would tentatively say no, because we have two commissioners saying no. And then if Commissioner Sakovic next week wants to bring any of those up to us that he feels passionately about, that he could.
I thought I was a yes on all the gifts and meals. Gina? I noticed on some of those. Uh, if you're down in that bottom section.
Retirement rather than.
Oh, I see. Well, I was just looking just now, if you scroll down a little bit further. So um, my mom, like, oh, okay. Right down here.
Oh, you know what?
Like these, yeah, like four. Yeah, sure. Like four twenty. Like I, I thought I was consistently saying good with gifts and meals. Did I?
We got some other ones that I'm noticing too.
So.
So let us double check that one to make sure it's not a retirement gift.
Okay.
Let's double check and make sure.
Okay.
We can pull those requests for gifts and meals out and isolate them and bring the, the group of them to you guys next week.
Yeah. I was gonna say, there's several of those, like, um, I'm noticing, uh, yeah, retire, retirement gifts. I'm seeing like it, just like you, I'm seeing several of those. Um, there's also a mileage reimbursement for environmental health that I, uh, if their updated request includes that, the updated request that is a reduction of two point five million, if it includes that, I'm okay with that. Um, a lot of these I had said no to before I went back and discussed with them, um, that I wanted them to come back with a modified request.
Yeah, there, there are a couple of notes that I want to have. Seventy-three, seventy-four and seventy-seven. Those three were included in the tentative budget, but those are part of the, the reductions that the health department made as well. So I just want to highlight those ones. They are pulled out now. So those are no longer on the list here.
Okay.
And.
I think we're, I think we look pretty good then.
We get to the end here and I think that's. Yeah.
Oh, um, let's see. Yeah. So those, those are the ones that were requested that you pulled out. Okay. Um. Do you have any more questions on this?
Just that A and C right there underneath that. Two fourteen that was in an attentive.
Oh, you know what?
That, yeah, what's that two hundred and fourteen thousand non-departmental in the A and C? Good catch. I hadn't seen that. I didn't.
Yeah, I, I think that that's an extraneous line that isn't supposed to be in here, but. It's a combination of some things here, which is other ones that are on here.
This is in the tentative budget. It was pulled when you approved, you saw the tentative back in October twenty-fifth. These, uh, four items were all listed as a single item. And then they've been broken out since then.
Okay.
And so it's there to, if we had the tentative budget column, it's there to show you that that's what was in the tentative. But they're elsewhere in here.
They're elsewhere in here.
Yeah.
And they say, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I hadn't even seen that.
And so that's what, that, that's the only reason is there just to provide the numbers that were in the, the tentative. Other than that, I don't see any others that are on here to list. So I think we have a listing of, of the recommendations that we are going to get back. We'll, we'll get, we'll make, get together with the sheriff's department and work through, um, their stuff. We'll pull something that has the gift request. So we can have that in, in a group for you. And then all the other ones we've, we've got direction in here. So we will, we will put a list together and we'll send you this out to you guys.
Before you get too far ahead of that.
Okay.
Um, I have a list of existing staffing plan positions that are currently vacant that I would like to eliminate.
Do you by any chance have a number?
I do.
Position number good.
I do. And Danine has these. Um, I worked with her yesterday on this. So Danine has these. Um, there's P zero 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 five five, which is an accounting technician position in the auditor's office. You guys have been without that position for some time now. Um, and I would like to eliminate that. So that would reduce base budget. Um, position P zero zero nine two five, that's a records management clerk. That's pretty much, we've been, we've been down to two. We very rarely have three in that position over the last three to four years. I would eliminate the open position. Um, obviously the, the, um, elections compliance person that I think you guys already did, that they wanted to use to fund the, the increase in the elections positions. Okay. Um, I don't have the number on that.
I ha- I have it. It's actually on my other list.
Yeah, it should be in the schedule because that was already scheduled to be eliminated.
And some of these I believe we've actually removed.
Now, this one I don't have a number for, but it's, uh, and currently we have three open positions in Wildland Fire. And I wanted to eliminate one. And then if they get hired, if the other two get hired and they need a third, they could come back and ask. But considering that we've had three open for over a year, I would like to eliminate one. And then like I said, if it's needed, they can come back and ask once the other two are filled.
I've got that number also.
I don't, I'm not picky about which one. I would say whichever one. There's three open positions there. Um, there were same thing. There are several uh, open vacant positions under, um, deputy two under corrections. And I would say, let's eliminate one. And then if all of those get filled and another one is needed, come back. And that one also, I don't have a position number because there's so many. There's several open. I don't care which one it is. And then the next three would be, um, health educator two positions. And I actually have position numbers for those. It's, uh, zero two five seven two, zero zero seven eight five and zero two two three three.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, you know what? The election compliance specialist, I do have the number on that one. It's zero two six one five.
Yeah.
I just read farther down.
Okay.
So commissioners, some of these are already
We will.
considered.
Yeah, we've already identified some of these for removing, removing them. I have a list that I can send you which ones we pulled out.
Is that, is that, okay. So.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. These, although we talked about.
Oh, you know what? There's one missing off this list and that was the surveyor. There's an open position in the surveyor's office.
And that one was identified as well.
Yeah, I don't have the number on that one.
Right? Cause Anthony has.
But I don't know if that's reflected in the budget.
It, it is.
Okay, it is. Okay.
And I have one more that you may not have. There is an additional, um, finance, um, finance budget analyst position that is an additional one in the staffing plan and we're pulling that out. That does not belong there as well.
That's great.
Cause we, we had talked about that, but I don't think it made it on your list.
And so just to be clear.
That would actually give us ten. Yeah. And I, my goal was to hit to ten. And if you, with that one and that one included, that includes ten.
And, and that doesn't, that's not the two that we're going to be recruiting for. That's the third one that we had on the list. So.
Similar, well, just similar, like we are eliminating, uh, you know, other ones that there's multiple of that are open that have been open for a while. Okay.
My only, my only question is just if they were not already included before today, if you'll just email those to us so that I.
Yeah. I believe all of these were in the numbers that we're looking at today, but I'll, I'll verify that. I actually have a list of like thirty-five positions, which includes the ones that the health department previously cut. So I'll, I'll send that, we'll send that over to you. So you can look that over. What we've adjusted.
I just want to confirm with my portfolios if, if that's a surprise, you know.
Yeah.
There's a snowball effect.
It shouldn't be a surprise to any, to any of them. Cause.
I understand your thinking. They've been vacant.
Yes.
But if there's a reason it's vacant in say fire, because it was a lighter fire year, perhaps, I don't know. You know, I just want to make sure I'm confirming with.
I did mention it to Mike in Buffton.
Okay.
Like I said, any of these, I spoke to the department head.
Yeah.
Okay.
And said, hey, this is my plan. If those all get filled and you can show us a need, I am willing to hear that.
That it just as a.
And so, yes. And so that's totally fine. And we can vote on it next week and you can talk to them. But I just want you to know, I didn't do any of this without at least giving a heads up to a department.
I'll send you that this afternoon. I have that.
That's my main thing, but you know, I, I also want to point out like the comeback isn't as scary as I think historically maybe department heads worry. Um, Eric and I at the health department worked through a situation where like their fear was, well, we don't want to reduce hours for an employee that's near retirement. Cause then we, when we come back and make that employee a full-time. But it's common sense in certain situations and I.
Well, and even with, I mean, in the past, we, the rightly so, the sheriff's department has been very hesitant because they have not had a friendly commission, but this year we did that, right? We eliminated one and said, if you fill them all, come back. And they filled them all and came back and we gave it to them just like we said we would. So I think we've shown and proven that if you can, if you can show us a genuine need, we'll do that. But in the meantime, it's, it's difficult for us to fund a position when we're in a ten million dollar deficit that's not, that's not open and hasn't been open. Right?
Yep.
Okay. So I'll send you guys that list and then we'll also send you a list of what our to-dos are for this next week on the things we've talked about. Make sure that we're all in agreement on those and we'll get that to you. Um, before we finish, can I do one thing that I, I want to do is I, I would really like to recognize my team. They have worked their tails off and we're so grateful that we have, have Gina here to work as the assistant budget manager. And we've got Cindy Rowe and Brian Wykel that have just put in so much time in putting this stuff together. And I really wanted to just recognize them for the good work that they're doing. And.
Absolutely. And Danine and Jeremy as well have done a phenomenal job. So absolutely. Every one of you guys has been phenomenal through this process. It's a super tough year with us having such a big deficit. Not easy conversations. I, I agree. Thank you for, for doing that, Rudy. And I recognize that every one of you has stepped up and worked your tails off and we know that and we appreciate that.
And, and the results are there. So we can see what the results have come from it. So, yeah. And we're looking forward to a really, a better year next year even. So that's, that's what, that's what's exciting because with the new staff in the budget office, we anticipate being able to work with the depart- departments more regularly, work with the commissioners more regularly and be able to get things that proceed, procedures and policies and things modified so that we can make things more efficient and better for the county.
We were, we were extremely grateful being a first-year commissioner with all of the efforts from the auditor's office, your finance team. Brian and Gina knew when I was at my limit, they would hand me two Excedrins and a caffeinated beverage.
There you go.
Say you're tapped out. We'll spend another couple hours, another day. And so it was for us, very, very helpful, very beneficial. Thank you.
And to that point.
The second most stressful year I've had. The most stressful was obviously the truth and taxation year.
Yeah.
This has been the second most stressful year I've had because we've had to cut so much every depart- I mean, every department I had to have very difficult conversations with. Every department didn't get everything they asked for. Every department had cuts, very difficult conversations. And your staff was incredibly useful and helpful.
And personally, I want to thank you so that the public knows all three commissioners were really engaged in this process this year. All three commissioners, it would, and this hasn't been the case over the last couple of years. All three commissioners did homework. They asked questions. They came to us and they said, hey, you know what? We don't think this is right. Let's change, look at this again. And you really did your job. And people don't see that that's what you guys did, but you guys really, all three of you, it was the most engaged I've, I've ever seen. It was just fantastic to work with all of you. So thank you.
Anything else?
You broke a record for me as far as my longest commission meeting. So I feel bad if anyone's waited for public comment. I really.
A third of what last year's budget meeting was.
Yes, it is.
I know. I did watch that. I did watch that.
Um, I think on this motion, we're going to need a motion to continue for one week.
Yeah, yes. Uh, and we know it's going to be next week. So it is a continue?
Yeah, continue for one week.
Okay. Motion on item number four to table for one week until the December thirteenth commission meeting.
All right. I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes two zero.
Thank you.
That's the end of our regular agenda. Before we break for closed session, um, are there any general public comments? So we don't have to do that after.
Just one for me real quick, commissioners. I was texting Commissioner Graves and I didn't, I didn't want to interrupt. It was like we had this great discussion about the agenda and then there was like the gratitude and everything. I didn't want to interrupt that moment. Um, Jeff Gray did mention on the time limited number and we have a, we have days now. We can continue to work through it. Um, he does actually still need, I think his understanding was a hundred thousand would, would, would still be there. Uh, for the time limited.
Existing or additional?
Um, additional.
Okay.
Because the, because those positions were filled, we don't have the eleven hundred account to pay the time limited.
Gotcha.
That was the discussion.
Okay. So we can discuss that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, one other comment. I, I do have some schedules that go through all of the funds. If anybody wants to have one, they are available here and we'll be happy to get it to anybody. As a, as of what the auditor's proposed was for today.
Thanks, Rudy.
Okay. Uh, with that, we will.
Public comment. So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We gotta go to closed session, unfortunately.
Thank you.
So I'm glad we were able to get a two and a half hour meeting in for you.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Thank you.
All right, okay, we'll go to closed session. Par for the course usually, right?